Well, welcome again to the Mesa City Council meeting for January the 9th, 2023. I will note that all of our council is present with the exception of Mr. Freeman, who is unable to attend tonight and is excused. We will begin our meeting this evening with an invocation offered by Pastor Jeremy Gills of the Mesa Church of Christ, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, thank you for being with us. Thank you for prepping us. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to serve. And so, God, in this gathering, we ask that you protect our hearts. In this gathering, we add that we ask that you provide gentleness to our tongues. In this gathering, finally, God, we ask that you preserve our minds. We thank you for doing this for us in advance. In His name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is awards and recognitions. We will begin with an Anti-Human Trafficking Month proclamation. Councilmember Spilsbury, you're taking the lead on this, so please tell us what we need to know.
Okay, thank you. I am honored to be able to present this proclamation in our city. This is so important, and we're joining in with a huge coalition of cities across the valley. And I also am proud to continue the efforts that have been made by Councilmember Thompson previously and continue in this great work and important work. Human trafficking is a global plague that impacts millions of people each year, including tens of thousands of Americans. The United States ranks as one of the worst countries globally for human trafficking, and Arizona ranks in the top 15 states with the highest rates of human trafficking per capita. Human trafficking impacts people across all demographics and ages, including teenagers and children. The battle against human trafficking includes supporting efforts in schools, churches, nonprofits, law enforcement, and businesses to prevent human trafficking, intervene, disrupt, and dismantle human trafficking syndicates, and provide resources to and support for victims of human trafficking. The city of Mesa joins schools, churches, nonprofit organizations, law enforcement, federal and state coalitions, and the notinourcity.org movement in our commitment to increase public awareness of the human trafficking epidemic that impacts our communities, state, nation, and world. And we have some special guests here tonight. I want to first invite Sergeant Lee, who is the sergeant of our Human Exploitation and Trafficking Unit for the city of Mesa, to come up and talk about the efforts the city of Mesa has been doing. And then Councilmember Scott September with Gilbert will also say a few words.
It's great to be here. Thank you for the invitation. Human trafficking obviously is a major issue here in the Phoenix metro area. It is January. It's Human Trafficking Awareness Month. My name is Joshua Lee. I am the police sergeant over the Human Trafficking Unit here in Mesa. I have two detectives assigned to me, one civilian investigator, and one Homeland Security Special Agent that's in our unit. We're small in numbers, but yet highly effective and powerful in what we can accomplish. For that reason, we're actually known as one of the leaders in human trafficking investigations in the state of Arizona, which is one of the reasons why we're called to help other agencies throughout this state. Since we're small in numbers, we rely heavily on the surrounding areas to help with our investigations. So here in Maricopa County, we work together as a team. Excuse me. During the course of 2021 to 2022, we've actually completed 13 large-scale investigations, arresting hundreds of suspects, saving countless victims of human trafficking. Our, if you're aware, we have a very large-scale event. The Super Bowl is coming to town next month. The Super Bowl is actually the largest human trafficking event in America. With that said, any large event will bring in human traffickers. But it just happens to be we have the trifecta of human trafficking coming to the valley, and that's the Barrett-Jackson, the Phoenix Open, and the Super Bowl, all in the same timeframe. So yes, we will get an influx of criminal activity and human traffickers during that time. But we've been preparing for about a year, doing these large-scale operations. So some of our operations, we target the buyers of actual people. We go after those that are buying people. Some of our operations are more around the traffickers, the people that are actually trafficking our victims. In some of our operations, we go after the victims themselves to help them and give them the resources that they need to escape the invisible chains that actually bind them to this lifestyle. So we really use a lot of different approaches in our operations here in Mesa. The Human Trafficking Unit, we have a two-pronged approach to what we do. Obviously, the first one is enforcement. Criminal enforcement is very important in what we do. So that's where the operations come into play. The second, our education, just as important, often overlooked, but that's what we need more of, is the actual education. We go out to our communities. We educate our schools. We go to our churches, our nonprofit organizations. We go out, anybody that's willing to listen, we go out and we teach them what we know about human trafficking so that they can understand what human trafficking is, what it isn't, how to recognize it, and more importantly, what to do when they actually do recognize it. Lastly, we do educate our police officers. Human trafficking victims are often underlooked. Officers are out and about with the community members and might come across the victim and not even know it. That's obviously an issue. So we spend time with our officers and explain exactly what to do when they come across a victim. We're very victim-centered, victim-oriented here in the city of Mesa, which is one of the reasons why we're so successful in what we do. Lastly, we can't do it without the support of our city council, our mayor's office, and more importantly, our citizens. This job is very difficult emotionally, physically, spiritually sometimes, so we really do rely heavily on the support of our community. So knowing that we have the support of the mayor's office, especially with this proclamation, it really does mean a lot to us, not only in the Human Trafficking Unit, but us as in general, as police officers. So I'd like to thank everybody for their time.
Mayor, council, my name is Scott September. I'm a council member for the town of Gilbert, and I want to thank you for making this proclamation. I think it's important that every city can make this proclamation. There are many things that divide us, and this is something that we can all stand behind together, arm in arm, and say no more. Tonight, we have a couple people here. We have Councilmember Mark Stewart from the city of Chandler, and we also have Terry and Judith Christ from City of Grace here in Mesa. And then we also have Pastor Mike Gowns, who is the founder of Night of Hope, and he's going to make a brief statement. Pastor?
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for this proclamation. And, you know, we're, as a church community and leaders, trying to rally together to support against this fight. And so we have been hosting, and you have been participating as well over the last four years for Night of Hope. And knowing the Super Bowl's coming here, we felt like we need to take this valley wide. And so February the 10th, two nights before the Super Bowl, we're having an event that you're all personally invited, hope that you can attend, along with, we have dozens of NFL football players going to be a part of that event, and our frontline ministries and organizations, law enforcement, elected officials will be there as well as, we're believing for over 100 churches to participate that night. And so we would love to invite you to be there and the Mesa City and community. And thank you again for just your bold proclamation that not in our city.
Well, thank you, pastors and council members. It's our honor to join with you regionally to do this. We do have a proclamation we'd like to share with you, so why don't we all gather in front of the podium and take a photograph, both remembering that. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the selection of our vice mayor. Ms. Mosley, have there been any requests to speak from the public on this agenda item?
No requests, Mayor.
Thank you. Would any council members like to make a motion?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion. I would like to nominate Councilmember Francisco Heredia to vice mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to select Councilmember Francisco Heredia as vice mayor. Please cast your vote. Are we on?
If anybody hit the buttons, let me restart. Try the motion again, please.
Jen, would you make the motion electronically?
It's not working either.
That's not working.
Now, a little bit of a delay, but it came up. All right, and then, there you go. Now, cast your vote.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Freeman absent. Let me just add my congratulations. It's been really an honor to work with Councilmember Francisco Heredia, now Vice Mayor Heredia, for the last several years. He's really just been a model of community service. And Francisco, thank you for your family, the dedication that they have. I know that your wife and your children are all very engaged in what you do, and we're excited to have you step up and assume this new role. Anything you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, no, just want to thank my colleagues for entrusting on me this role. You know, it's always a blessing and a privilege to represent the city of Mesa, this great city that we live in. Being on the council, we have a lot of work to do. We've been doing, I think, a good job. I think we can always do better in the issues that we, it comes to our table, and things like homelessness, housing, transit, transportation, and many other issues. I think we can always do better. So my hope is to work, continue that work with my colleagues, with city staff, with residents and stakeholders, to make this city the best place to live, work, and play. So I look forward to the role, and we'll be keeping, working with everybody to ensure that we do this. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Heredia. And I just want to add my thanks to Councilmember Duff for her service the last two years as vice mayor. She did an excellent job representing, when called upon, represented our city extremely well in a variety of situations. So thank you very much for the, you took that assignment very seriously, did an excellent job. Thank you for your great service. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is the consent agenda. So we'd invite Mr. Christopher to please come forward and read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 3, approval of minutes of previous meetings is written. Item 4A, act on liquor license application for St. Timothy Roman Catholic Parish, one-day event, January 27th, 1730 West Guadalupe Road. Item 4B, act on liquor license application for Village Grill and Patio, 11,061 East Medina Avenue. Item 4C, act on liquor license application for Creative Dance Collective, 2107 West Guadalupe Road. Item 4D, act on liquor license application for Rosati's Ellsworth, 1035 North Ellsworth Road. Item 5A, approving use of cooperative contract for the purchase and installation of six fire dispatch furniture consoles for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 5B, approving use of one portable chemical identifier for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. This purchase is grant-funded by the Arizona Department of Homeland Security. Item 5C, approving dollar limit increase and one-year renewal of the term contract for tires, for the materials and supply warehouse, for the fleet services and Mesa Fire and Medical Departments. Item 5D, ratifying emergency purchase and establishment of a term contract with optional renewals using a cooperative contract for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel for the Fleet Services Department. Item 5E, awarding one additional vendor using a cooperative contract for the term contract for heavy-duty truck, construction, industrial fleet, and equipment parts, services, and accessories for the Fleet Services Department. Item 5F, approving one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for air filters for the materials and supply warehouse for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 5G, approving use of a cooperative contract with an initial term of two years and three months with renewal options for the installation, maintenance, and repairs of outdoor sports courts for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 5H, approving use of a cooperative contract for an initial term of 15 months and two years of renewal options for audiovisual equipment, accessories, and services for various city departments. Item 5I, approving use of a cooperative contract for a two-year and nine-month term contract for communications cabling systems for various city departments, as requested by the Department of Innovation and Technology. Item 5J, approving three-year lease renewal to three-year renewal options for the city's data center space for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Item 5K, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for bio-solids removal and reuse disposal services for the Water Resources Department. Item 5L, approving purchase of auger and liner replacements for the bar screen conveyor system for the Water Resources Department. Item 5M, approving use of a cooperative contract for an initial term of 18 months and three years of renewal options for machine shops and related services for the Water Resources Department. Item 5N, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for residential refuse and recycling containers for the Solid Waste Department. Item 5O, approving one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for traffic control cabinets and controllers, traffic signal video detection systems, and school zone flasher controls for the Transportation Department. Item 5P, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for traffic control sign hardware and materials for the Transportation Department. Item 6A, approving resolution modifying fees and charges for the Business Services Department by adding a new fee for a short-term rental license. Item 6B, approving resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Pinal County for an installation of a gas sleeve at the Queen Creek Wash. Item 6C, approving resolution extinguishing a 50-foot drainage easement and a 45-foot drainage easement generally located near the southwest corner of East Peterson Avenue and South 94th Place to allow for reconfiguration of both easements and accommodate future development. Item 6D, approving resolution extinguishing a 20-foot waterline easement located at 7722 East Velocity Way to allow for development of the property with two speculative industrial buildings. Item 7A, approving ordinance for zoning case 21-80 for property located east of Hickley Road on the south side of Thomas Road. Rezone with planned area development overlay, council use permit, and site plan review to allow for a boat and recreational vehicle storage facility. Item 7B, approving resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with RNS Development Group on approximately 10 acres of land for property located east of Hickley Road on the south side of Thomas Road. Item 8A, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 22-429 for property located east of Alvesta Drive and south Huber Street. Rezone to allow for single residence development. Item 8B, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 22-546 for property located south of Virginia Street on the west side of Recker Road. Site plan modification and amended conditions of approval on zoning case Z07-118. This is to allow for a commercial development. Item 9A, approving ordinance for annexation case 22-01048 to de-annex the public right-of-way located within the 4,200 to 4,400 blocks of South Sausman Road to Maricopa County. This is subject to approval by the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Item 10A, approving subdivision plat, replat of Heritage Village Assisted Living for property located south of Brown Road and east of 80th Street. Item 10B, approving subdivision plat, replat of Master Final Plat Avalon Crossing Development Unit 1 for property generally located east of Crisman Road and south of Williams Field Road. Item 10C, approving subdivision plat, Mesa Technology Park 2 for property generally located north of Elliott Road and west of Ellsworth Road. And item 10D, approving subdivision plat, Kitchell 202 Val Vista for property on the northwest corner of Thomas Road and Val Vista Drive. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda?
We do not have any requests.
All right, thank you. I note that Ms. Spilsbury has made a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Duff for approval of the consent agenda, please vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously with Mr. Freeman being excused. Next item on our agenda is items 11A and 11B. This is for the rezoning and development agreement for property generally located east of Hickley Road and north of Baseline Road for the Baseline Logistics Park development. The applicant has requested a continuance for both of these items to the January 23rd, 2023 council meeting. Councilmember Summers has conflicted off these items and will not be participating or voting. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No requests, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to discuss this item? Is there a motion to continue both of these items to the January 23rd meeting? Thank you, Councilmember Spilsbury. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Heredia. Please vote. All right, the vote is unanimous with Mr. Summers abstaining due to a conflict and Mr. Freeman being absent to continue this item to the January 23rd meeting. So if you are interested in this, please come back two weeks from tonight, and we'll have that vote. Next, item 12 is on our agenda, is the city's annual comprehensive financial report and single audit report. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this item? I think you previously gave me a blue card. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, one request.
Any, okay, thank you. Mr. Davis, welcome. Invite you forward to speak on this agenda item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Kerry Davis. I reside at 7963 East Plata Avenue. I currently serve as the treasurer for Legislative District 15. I want to congratulate you on receiving the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the fiscal year ended 2021 and the completion of your June 30th, 2022 year-end audit. As reported on page seven of the 2022 Audit Financial Statements, the unrestricted net position for governmental activities reflects a negative balance of $886 million for an unfavorable impact of $44 million over the prior year. Page eight reflects total revenues for governmental activities of $842 million, but total expenses of $897 million for a deficit of $55 million before transfers of $116 million from the business-type utility funds. Since 2011, the city has overspent government activity revenues by $947 million and transferred from the business-type utility funds over $1.2 billion to offset governmental activity overspending. Page 13 of the report notes the total business-type utility activity revenues increased by $44 million primarily related to increases in utility rates. It seems to me if the city reduced overspending, the governmental activities, it would not need to overcharge utility customers to cover the deficit spending. The current year budget for 2023 projects a general governmental fund deficit of $139 million. Approximately $60 million of this projected deficit is due to increased labor expenses over the prior year. The budget projects transferring $120 million from the utility fund to offset the deficit. Given the likelihood of an economic slowdown in 2023 is demonstrated by recently announced significant corporate layoffs, it would seem prudent for the city to take proactive stance by reducing expenditures now. My question for the mayor and city council is, what is your strategy for reducing overall spending, overspending governmental activity revenues in order to stop overburdening Mesa utility ratepayers? I hope you will forgive me for sounding like a broken record, but as a Mesa resident, I'm concerned about the long-term fiscal health of our community, and I merely want to encourage prudent, conservative financial policies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next, we'll have a presentation from our auditor and city staff on this item. Irma, would you like to go, are we going to have our auditor, Ms. Kronstrom, go first, or you'll take it from here?
Yes, Mayor, council. I'll have Sandy present first the results of our audit and the single audit, and then I'll do a brief presentation on the results of our financials.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. So 2022 was a busy year for the auditors and the financial staff of your city. The city implemented a very large accounting standard last year, GASB Statement Number 87, related to leases. We talked a little bit about this last year, that it was on the horizon. Well, it's here, and it was a pretty significant impact to city of Mesa. The city of Mesa has a large number of lease agreements where the city is the lessor, is leasing property, a lot of it out at the airport, those types of things that are now being recorded as receivables in your financial statements, offset by what we call a deferred inflow of resources, where it'll get recognized over time as that money is earned. But it used to be that we just reported that as a footnote disclosure. It was never booked in the financial statements itself. On our side, as auditors, we had some pretty significant auditing standards that changed as well. One of the things that you will notice if you looked at our auditor's report is that the format has changed. So our auditor, our opinion is the first two paragraphs of the report, where it used to be kind of down in the middle somewhere. So front and center, our audit opinion, we issued an unmodified, or what we call a clean opinion, on the city's financial statements. Following that is kind of the city management's responsibility in the audit process, our responsibility in the audit process, those types of things, if you read through that report. Also, we've completed the single audit testing this time, we finished it this fall. We were busy with that as well. We tested six major programs this year. Normally, we test about two. The reason for that is, has a lot to do with the COVID-19 funding, some of the rotation of the programs that we have to test over time. It just fell, we ended up testing the Section 8 program this year because it was due up. So that was one of the six programs. We did not have any findings related to any internal controls over those programs or compliance issues with those programs. The city spent about $97 million in federal dollars last year, and we ended up auditing about 89% of that, just because of the way the dollars fell and, you know, some of the programs were pretty large that we had to test. We did have one internal control finding related to, we had some audit adjustments through our audit procedures. When we were reviewing audit schedules, we did find a couple of errors that required audit adjustments from the city side, and we felt that it was, there were enough of them. It rose to the level that we thought we should report them to you as governance. We considered it a significant deficiency, not a material weakness over your internal controls, but again, we felt it was important enough to bring to your attention. We still have a couple of reports to complete. I don't think they're anything we need to bring to you guys. We're working, the court has a triennial agreed-upon procedures. We're just about done with that. We have a HUD filing that needs to be done, and then the expenditure limitation report, which, all of which will be done here in the next probably month or so. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Council questions on this agenda item? All right, thank you. Irma?
This one looks different. I apologize. Where did I go to this slide? Oh, there we go. It looked different on the computer. I apologize. I had a small, I had a small box. Okay. Okay, I'll go quickly through the results of our audit. Sandy went through that. As you mentioned, we had unmodified report. It was issued, clean opinion. Didn't have any material findings.
Okay, I'll go quickly through the results of our audit. Sandy went through that. As you mentioned, we had an unmodified report, it was issued, clean opinion, didn't have any material findings. We followed generally accepted accounting principles and all the Government Accounting Standards Board statements, which, as Sandy mentions, GASB 87, which is a big one this year. Some financial highlights, our revenues increased for the city $102 million compared to the prior year. The graph shows that the majority of the revenue increases is in our governmental activities, but you can see a steady increase over the last three years. The detail of the revenues for the governmental activities is taxes, that's sales tax and property taxes. Sales tax revenues continue to increase for the city, and you see that in the first column. Unrestricted and governmental revenues were pretty steady, the transfers actually were pretty steady compared to prior year, and there was an increase in program revenue. Most of our federal funds, ARPA and EREP are all recorded as program revenue, so that's why you see that big increase. Total assets for the city increased to $5.2 billion. The largest portion of our assets are our capital assets, which are our buildings, our infrastructure, our water plants, that kind of thing. And then we have other assets and some cash and investments. Cash investments increased in comparison to prior year as well. This is a snapshot of what our investments were as of June 30th, 2022. We have cash with the bank, with local government investment pool with the state, and also some long-term investments. The city's total liabilities are $4.2 billion. If you compare to the prior years, it looks pretty steady comparison to the prior years. Our larger two liabilities are our bonds, outstanding long-term obligations, and our pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities that we also have. This compares the long-term obligations current year compared to the prior year by each of the types of obligations that the city has. And then this is a comparison of our pension and OPEB unfunded liability broken up by the type of the pension system, ASRS, Public Safety, and the city's OPEB, other post-employment benefit plan. And that's a high level of the results of our audit.
Mayor, just, I want to thank Sandy and her team for coming in and doing the audit. They do a great job every year. And Irma and her staff, who have to prepare for this literally year round, as to prepare for the auditors to come in, and so we appreciate their work in making sure there's a very high standard of which, how we account for the public funds. And I also want to be, make it very clear, the city does not run a deficit. That would be illegal for us to do that, we can't do that. Everything that is planned in our budget, whether it's governmental resources or transfers, are planned and are calculated to meet the needs of the city. So I just want to be clear that in no way does the city run a deficit budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, are there questions or comments on this agenda item? Councilmember Duff.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I don't have any questions, but a couple of comments overall. In the taxes, we had a significant increase in our tax revenue, and I just wanted to state that isn't an increase in taxes, that is an increase in sales activity for anybody interested. So we haven't increased our taxes. In Mesa, in fact, if we've done anything, we've reduced it, especially on the secondary property tax. Also, that we do have reserves, that we'd like to keep at a certain percentage. We did identify that our reserve funds was higher than we wanted it to be, and so we intentionally drew that down, like especially in our utilities and some other funds, using some of that reserves instead of taking increases to offset expenses. So those are a couple of comments. I want to make us chair the Audit and Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spillsbury.
Yes, thank you so much for all of this. Chris, I just want to ask a question then. What, if, you know, a normal citizen's looking at this and they see these negative amounts or whatever, and you're saying we don't have a deficit, right? So I know it's extremely complicated and very confusing, but like, how could we make that clear to just the normal person reading it?
In my way, it's very simple, and since there's an auditor in the room, we can verify.
Okay.
If you isolate some schedules, you can come up with one conclusion. If you take all of the resources of the city, they're available and scheduled to be available for our expenditures and our operating activities, we do not run out of deficit. So if you take all our resources, and that's all the taxes coming in, all the reserves that we have in balance, and whether we, and the transfers that we schedule from the utility fund since the 1940s, all of those are available to pay for the operations of the city and all the capital improvements and all the debt service, whether it's in the general fund or whether it's the utility fund. We take all that together, we have enough available resources to meet the needs of our capital and debt service overall. So that's the plan. If you want to isolate specific descriptions of revenues and taxes and only these operations over here, you can show that they don't match up, but that's not how we do our budget. We look at all the resources available to the city against all of the needs that we're going to have, and we certainly don't run out of deficit. Because we can't go borrow that money. If we hear deficit, that would suggest you have to go find the money from somewhere else. We don't. It's all included, all self-sustained, we cover all our expenses with all our resources.
And so it's just looking at the?
If you want to be very, if you want to be, isolate certain schedules, you could come up with that, but that's not how the city operates. We consider all the resources, and we've always scheduled transfers to cover public safety expenses and some general fund expenses, and we've been doing it for decades. So it's not, we don't run a deficit. We've always, that's always been part of the plan.
Perfect, thank you. And I, I mean, I have access to a ton of people that I could ask these questions to and look into and research and stuff, but I have heard this from other people out in the community. And so what would be the best person to direct them to? Or if they had questions, like who should I steer people to that could, you know, people who want to dig into this, that it looks like a deficit to them, who could I steer them to?
I think Mr. Kennington and Irma would both be the right people to.
And then you guys could tell them who they, like who they could meet with or talk to?
I think they've met with several individuals over the years.
Okay, because I mean, again, I don't want people out in the community to think that we run our city at a deficit, because I know that's not true, but I have heard, I've heard that from several people, and it is just, it's, like you said, isolating different parts of the budget. And so I just wanted to make that available to people to know that they could come and ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, I think everything that needs to be said has been said. I'll just reiterate that we are anxious, we are very transparent, we're, I appreciate, Mr. Davis, I appreciate your passion and your interest in this, and I know I had, appreciate the opportunity, we've had to chat a few times and for you to meet with city staff, so thank you for, in, you know, good faith, asking these questions. I don't, not disappointed at all that you're here. We want folks to ask these questions and to get these answers. And I'm very comfortable for the reasons that have already been expressed, that the city is very financially sound. Our, we don't, haven't talked about our bond rating, but they're, you know, AAA and AA+ and we, and have a good report from our auditor, so I feel like I'd be anxious to talk to anyone that has questions about our financial stability and feel proud of the job that we're doing. Any additional discussion on this item? Is there a motion to approve this item?
It doesn't need to be approved.
Oh. I take it back.
Oh, okay. So this is not on our agenda for action?
I approve of that.
State statute requires that the auditor present the results of the audit at a regular council meeting, but the state statute doesn't require the council to have to approve it.
It also uses the word accepting, so the motion won't hurt, the statute's unclear, and so I'd rather do the motion just for?
It's called belches and suspenders.
Right. I understand, I know, like, it's a very oddly worded statute, so I'd prefer to have the motion.
Thank you. The electronic, we have Ms. Spillsbury making the motion and Ms. Duff seconding it, so please vote. Thank you. It passes unanimously with Mr. Freeman absent and excused. Next agenda item is items from citizens present. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak?
We have no requests, Mayor.
All right, thank you. That concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Mr. Heredia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.